This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so I screwed that up, pressing a button. All right. And a call to order, this ordinance committee meeting of Thursday, September 3rd. Will we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
All right, Cheryl Anne, could you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Chairman Servoni?
Here.
Counselor Fishbein?
Here.
Counsel Laffin? He was here. Counselor Marrone is not here. Counselor Morgenstein is not here. Chairman Chortel?
Here.
Counselor Tada?
Here.
Counselor Testa is not, and Counselors Andrew?
Here.
Counselor Laffin is back on.
Yes, I see him.
All right. I was gonna say if I missed the roll call point, can I just leave?
Six counselors present in the common forum enthusiastically here. Thank you, Cheryl Anne, for that. I'm just going to read a quick script for those of you members of the public, if there are any, I do see one caller attending, just some quick guidelines you should be familiar with by now with these meetings. First of all, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking the question. That would go for all of us, not just the public. Also, for members of the public, please keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not do well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person comes through at a time, so please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a gavel which pains me, but I can just mute you, so I don't need a gavel. I have a mute all button. If people are not participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all. This is really harsh, Vinny, like reading it, it's just different. Usually when you're reading it, I'm like zoning out. This is really harsh, but I'll mute all of you unless you're respectful. That's the bottom line. And I'll proceed to go through the agenda. We do just, these meetings are not typically televised, so you may not be familiar with these meetings. We do not have a general public question and answer. We do have question and answer with the public on every item on this agenda, so if you have, if you want to talk about some, one of the agenda items, just put that in the chat. And once the council, we've gone through the council, I will call on you and I'll ask you, identify yourself with your name and your street address, and then you can comment. And then I'll go to the phones and ask for your ask for any comments from the phones. So, yeah, I think that's it in terms of the rules of the road. Before we, so our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I just want to make one comment before we get into the business of this meeting. I'm just gonna go off script a little bit. I just want to acknowledge today is the first day of school. I just want to, you know, on behalf of the council, just congratulate the school district on getting back there. It's the first time we've had students and teachers physically in a building since the middle of March, and I know this is a process. It's been a long process. It will continue to be a long process, but I just want to acknowledge that. It's a big milestone today for our community. So, congrats to all the teachers, administrators, and students getting back to school. So with that, we will go back to the regular agenda and we will item three is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was June 16th, 2020. Before I make a motion on this, I'm gonna be really picky, and I apologize, Cheryl Anne. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna motion that we approve these minutes with one correction, and the correction being in the first paragraph, when it lists the attendance, the word "and" is in the wrong place. It should read Counselors Morgenstein, Fishbein, and Vinny Testa were absent, period. Currently, the "and" is after Counselor Testa's name. So I just wanna, I know it's minor, but it's just English major, former English major, just so I make that, I make a motion that you approve the minutes, that one correction. Does anybody want to second that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Chairman Smalley. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Um, I just, as indicated in the minutes, I was not present, and therefore I'm going to abstain from voting on the minutes. I'm sure they're accurate and they, I was able to read them and to see what happened at the meeting, but I don't think it would be appropriate that I vote on them. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fishbein. Any other comments in the minutes? Okay, any, let's just do a, all in favor of the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions, Counselor Fishbein abstains. Please note that. All right, we will move on to item four. Discussion and possible action on amending Chapter 46 Reserve Accounts, Sections 46-46-8. So, we do have in our backup proposed language, I see Mr. Bose, you are, you are with us as well. And I'll just do a really, really quick background, you know, quick summary of what this is again, for those of you just to get everyone on the same page. During our budget process, we looked at the money in the cap and non-recurring account. The cap and non-recurring account gets an annual payment in lieu of taxes from the Electric Division, and that money is earmarked for large projects, ton-wide paving. We get a monthly report from Mr. Bose and from the administration on everything, but included is where, how these cap and non accounts, well, how they're doing. So that's the concern that was raised at the council was when a project is closed out under budget, that money would lapse, and it wouldn't lapse, that money would go to, become unassigned in cap and non, and this goes back to the beginning of time. So, it's just one of those things. If we budgeted $300,000 to do a project and it came in at $290,000, that extra $10,000 would simply revert to an unassigned status. It still stays in cap and non, and that money over the course of the last over decades accumulates, and there is no line item currently in the report that tells us what that money is. Mr. Bose, and when we, I know in our budget hearings, you'd indicated you do a sweep of the cap and non account precisely for that purpose. I think you said you do it twice a year, so the intention of this amendment is simply to have a report out of that dollar amount prior to our budget cycle on April 1st. So that's the intent. The language is in the backup, as I said. So I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt this language as presented, and then we can discuss it if there's a second to that motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Tada. So I will stop talking and discussion on the motion. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the language as before us. I think it's a good start. I would just be looking for a lot more information, so first of all, you know, I understand the April 1st, it's in conjunction with the budget and for our contemplation of perhaps utilization of those funds or, you know, seeing where we are. But the other component we have here is the end-of-year audit, which may adjust those numbers. So, you know, I would think that twice a year would not be inappropriate for us to get this information. Also, you know, all this tells us is projects that are completed or done. It doesn't tell us what projects are uncompleted. And, you know, how much is left, where all that stuff is, because and why that's important is because when we look at the Charter, and I'm specifically looking at, on page 28, which it is, it's Section 19, Roman 19, subsection four, it says that in referencing this account, "Such appropriation shall deem to have been abandoned if no expenditure from or encumbrance of the appropriation has been made within three years of its approval, except as provided in the next paragraph." We don't need to get to this at this point. And the problem is, this language is drafted, we would not have that information. We wouldn't know, you know, what project has been abandoned potentially under the language of the Charter, how much money is left in that project, and those kinds of things. You know, so I think it's a good start, but I really don't think it gets us anywhere near where we need to be. And Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention to you that, you know, and this shouldn't be a hard lift, I think that 46-7, which is a portion of this same chapter, needs to be amended to comport to the Charter because it presently references to Chapter Romans 7 of the Charter, and that should read Chapter Romans 19.
Yeah.
I believe.
Covered that last meeting, and we can follow up on that. Let me, let me just, I know Mr. Bose is on the line, let me just, before we go to him, I want to address one of the things you mentioned. You said, "We don't know what projects have not been completed." I think we do know, because in our monthly reporting, we have that reported out to us. So I think that that part, unless I'm missing something, in fact, we covered that at our budget hearing this year. There were projects going back to the Wallace Ave parking lot, and I think we grilled Mr. Baltromidus for an hour on all of those projects, and what, you know, some of them, they were done, but we were waiting for a state grant, and that's why they're still showing up in the report. There were all different reasons why the, so I don't know that we're not seeing the incomplete projects.
And I, and I respect that. I just, I would want to see, you know, the intent of the information is so that it can be utilized in having to take from two different documents, or, you know, it could be multidocuments to get that answer. I just think it would be more user efficient if it was on one document, it's just a transfer over, so I recognize, Mr. Chairman, what you're bringing to my attention. But I'd like to see it all on one page, so thank you.
Do you ever speak English, Craig? You recognize what I'm bringing to your attention. Thank you for recognizing what I bring to your attention. Cheryl Anne, I recognize that Counsel Marrone is in attendance, by the way. He's here. Just, I want to add him to the, that he is present and accounted for. I don't think any other of the counselors that were absent are here yet, but before we go, and Joe, you're next in the line, but Jim Bose. Counselor Fishbein talked about doing this twice a year. He talked about the audit. We don't get the audit till around Christmas, so I don't Mr. Bose, what are your thoughts on going twice a year? When do you do it now, I guess? Let me start there. When do you do this week currently?
We do it in conjunction with closing out the books and readying the books for audit. And then we do it probably, you know, probably around March-ish or something like that with discussions with public works.
Okay. So like you basically, so like you do it, like kinda like now you're doing it, and then you do it again in the spring, then?
Yeah, we're we're at least a month behind in many aspects of the four divisions that I manage, and accounting being one of them, and some of it is to do with a lot of the workings of a lot of subcontractors not working from their office and trying to work from home and not being able to come, you know, to compile some data that we need for the audit, as well as some internal people taking advantage of taking some time off, et cetera, et cetera, as allowed by federal and state various mandates, but it's, it'll probably be more like towards the end of October this year. Matter of fact, Rob Baltromidus and I haven't even spoke about, talking about a date yet, but it will be a little bit later this year, but it will probably be like late Octoberish.
Okay. You know, I could see it both ways. I mean, since you're already doing it twice, I don't see the harm in having you report it twice. You know, whenever you got it done in the fall, and then again in April, I don't know how much is gonna change over the winter, you know, but I, I mean
It's, that's a good point. There won't be much of a change. The more up-to-date one is, as I envisioned this after speaking to you folks about it during the budget process this year, the one that we do, you know, probably March-ish, is probably a little bit more up-to-date. That's why I suggested that it be, you know, to the council on or before April 1st, to coincide with the Charter requirement of the mayor's budget being due to the, to the council then. So I, I'm pretty sure that if you just want it twice a year, there's no harm, no foul with that, but I just don't know if it's gonna be that much more helpful to you, but if that's what you want, we, we can do that.
Okay. You can, you know, before we finish this item, we can take a poll and see if they want to amend the language. I think it's most helpful before April 1st. I brought that to me. If we get the number in October, it's great. It's information, it's transparency. I appreciate that. We really can't do much with it anyway. So I don't, you know, again, I don't, as long, you know, you're doing it anyway, we can so we'll, we'll, we'll circle back to that before we vote on this, one way or the other. Mr. Bose, on the second point that Craig raised, was I correct in my answer? I mean, the projects that are already underway are already reported out in the monthly report, correct? There's nothing not, not in there now.
That's correct. You are correct. The monthly reports will have the status of all projects that are authorized to spend any expenditures or encumbrances and the available authorized balance for each month ending. And if you can probably see right from those reports, if there is no activity from the original date of the authorization, for example, if you went back four years or five years, and you saw a project approved by the council for $500,000, let's say, and then you don't see any activity in that, you know, no expenditures or nothing encumbered, then you know that there is something that's being delayed with that. And as you referenced, there's been a couple of times when that has happened over the last few years, and some of it has to do with I know one time we were, and I don't recall which projects these were off the top of my head, and I think it predates Mr. Baltromidus as the Public Works Director. But we had issues with waiting for something like Yankee Gas, doing some, some work around an area. And of course, Mr. McCully would delay that until everything was said and done before he tried paving or doing any work, and then having obviously to redo it again. Things of that nature have happened, not often. But that would be a delay in starting such project, if you will, because I think that's, and I apologize, I'm home, I'm on vacation, so I don't have the Charter or the code in front of me. I meant, I meant to take him home. But anyhow. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry that you're here. You're on vacation. I
That's all right. It's a, it's a staycation. We're, it's a homecation. But anyway, we, just knowing the country, you can go. No place nice, at least, but you know, along those lines, you might see something that has activity. For example, that same example of half a million dollars, let's say, spent 400, and you're showing $100,000 available balance. You might see that balance hanging around there for a while. As was discussed, I know for several years now, waiting for some type of project closeout, because there's some some state or federal, usually state funding involved. And some of those projects take, oh gosh, I remember one year when John Thompson was the town engineer, this is, might be going back about nine years, we had to actually budget in the cap and non-recurring, something like $79,000 because we owed the state, the state over reimbursed us and then came back eight years or something like that after the project was completed, and we had closed the project out. So John Thompson spoke to the state and said, "Look, it, you know, it's February, can you wait till July when we put this in our budget to pay you folks back, because $79,000 is a lot of money." And so we actually put that in the cap and non-recurring budget. I don't have that document, but if you want me to look in that and get that to you, what year that happened in, I I can certainly look that up when I get back to work Tuesday and let you know. So you're, you're actually seeing it in that document, monthly, the monthly printout that you're getting. I do know it might take a question or two, which of course, you know, it's, but it's up to you. I'm having trouble seeing how it would help you getting something different.
Yeah, I think what, and I don't want to speak for him, but I think what Counselor Fishbein was getting at was what we're doing today, you know, we're gonna, we passed this amendment, you will do a report out either once or twice a year. And I think, I think what Counselor Fishbein was driving at, one of the things was that, is there a way to do it in the same report? Is there a way on the same piece of, you know, you're right now, the monthly report, as we just confirmed, it lists all these projects that aren't finished. Is, and I don't know, it's, you're generating it obviously from a system. Is there a way to add a line item that had, you know, twice a year, that has this, this unassigned dollar amount? And there may, there may not be, I don't know. I think that's what he was, one of the things he was getting at.
Yeah, right now, actually, in the monthly reports that you're getting, that is, that information's also contained in that report. However, it is a little bit difficult to discern what that information is. For example, if you saw a budget that started, let's say, the half a million dollar project that we were talking about, and we spent $400,000. All right, that report, the way the report looks at that, it shows the original authorized amount, let's say, half a million dollars. And the very next column, it shows the authorized amount. That amount would actually come down to $400,000. That would match the expenditures, and the available amount to spend is zero. That's because we've closed that project out, and we reduced the authorized budget amount. Now, the original budget amount still stays intact, because that has to, because we gotta go back to the budget authorization or a supplemental move by the council, actually by the council to approve a project or a transfer of funds or things of that nature within the cap and non-recurring fund. But if you saw that change in, between the original budget column and the very next column, the very next column which right, which says authorized amount, if you saw a change in that number, you would know that there was a reduction in that amount to spend because we closed the project. So it's, it's kind of already in there. This report that I believe the council is requesting through this, this move tonight, or whenever you say bring it to the full council, is to maybe make that a little bit clearer as to what we closed out and the amounts and project, you know, you know, with the same account numbers and everything else. So it's, it's already in the report that you're getting, but it's sort of supplemental to help you out a little bit more. That's the way I see it right now.
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment. The, okay, and again, just following through on a lot, because Counselor Fishbein raised a lot of issues, and I just want to make sure we address all of them. Last thing, I think, that we haven't addressed, I don't I don't know that it's relevant to this vote right now, but it, he brought it up, and I wanted at least talk it through very quickly, but the Charter does say if a project has no, has no money spent after three years, it is, it has lapsed. So what is the process? Maybe Attorney Small can weigh in too. I mean, I don't know, is there a does it lapse automatically, or does it, are we just not? I mean, I see projects in there that are older, and we've talked about, there's a variety of reasons why a project may not might get delayed for any number of good reasons. Not no one's fault, but, but the Charter doesn't really, if you read that section of the Charter, it's pretty clear. It doesn't really give a lot of leeway. Basically says after three years, if no money is spent, the project is considered lapsed. I don't know how that works. Is it lapse automatically? Do we have to take action?
No, you don't.
Be authorized?
True.
If I may. What that language is, I believe, contained in the section which is sort of involved with the budget-making process. And I believe, I can tell you the way I've interpreted it, which I believe is consistent with the way it's been interpreted for decades before me as well, is that when you budget something, you have three years basically to, I, I, let me take a step back. Once the council authorizes a project in the cap and non-recurring fund, we've got three years to basically start spending money on that project, or it could be considered abandoned. I don't know, other than one instance, and that was a project on Tankwood Road, and I forgot what that was even about, to be honest with you, and it's going back to a that was even in the budget prior to me getting here, I think. That's how far back that went, and that stuck around for, for a while. And I think we ended up abandoning that project after a while, but I'm not 100% sure of. But other than that exception, I can't recall a time when we did not at least start the project by expending some funds, getting some funds going, either seed money, architectural money, bid money, things of that nature spent to get a project going. If there is one, I'm not saying there isn't one out there, but I, other than that, that Tankwood Road project, for some reason, it still sticks in my head. And I don't, and I, I don't recall the details of that one, but I don't recall any other project not starting for three full years after the council authorized it.
Well, I can give you, I think the Brothers Parking Lot is an example. There's, I think there's 155,000 that was authorized in 2014 for brothers that I don't think anything, I think we're gonna spend it now, or, right, but I, so that's an example. I don't know that I want to go down this rabbit hole tonight, but I think it's something we probably do want to look at in the future. But that's an example off the top of my head, is the Brothers Parking Lot. I think there's also Wallace Ave Parking Lot. So I, you know, that was authorized in 2010, and I, but anyway.
Chairman, I didn't, I didn't bring my Charter with me, and I didn't spend any time on that section, so I don't, I don't, I think it's not just if you started. I think even if you started, if you don't, if you then three years goes by, it's lapsed, so, but I honestly, I don't have it in front of me, and I didn't spend any time looking at that particular section.
Let's, then I don't, I don't want to go down, you know what, I think we can resume this portion of the discussion some other time. I think it's important, and I don't want to just let it go, and I won't. But I don't know that it's germane to what we're trying to pass tonight. I think it's a good discussion to have, so we're all on the same page about what's lapsed, what's not, what's not lapsed, and how we interpret it, and, you know, any action we may take. So this is a good discussion so far, and let's just, Craig, if you're okay with it, let's
Yeah, I have no problem. Mr. Chairman, can we just earmark this for like the next meeting or something?
I would, I'd like to earmark it for November, and I'll explain why later in this meeting, but I will earmark it. I will take notes. Counsel Marrone, you've been very patient. About five hours ago, you told me you wanted to have a comment. I yield to you, Counsel Marrone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and actually, most of my questions were covered already. I'd like to attach myself to Counselor Fishbein's comments, because I agree with him. I think part of the problem here is our thinking is, we attach, so the budget, you know, we authorize money in the budget, and then the money gets spent or doesn't get spent, and at the end of the year, you start essentially a new budget from scratch. Well, the cap and non is not like that. This is a fund that sort of goes on forever ad infinitum, so I'm not sure that we should be talking about the cap and non in the same vein as the budget. So I think maybe that that's the, you know, I understand from a, an accounting perspective, it's probably more convenient for the CAFR to have everything together all at once. But maybe we should devote a different time of the year to the budget for the, the cap and non. Because we found some money this year that we didn't know was out there, right, which isn't a huge deal, other than that we didn't, we lost track of some funds somewhere. And I'm not saying, I'm not putting that, you know, at the feet of this administration. It could have been there for decades. But I think that this is something, the reason we're talking about this is because we recognize that there's a problem, so I think that maybe we need to take a different approach to how we handle this whole process, and maybe talk about the cap and non either more frequently, or have a completely different season to talk about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Marrone. I, yeah, I think, I, I just, just to sort of clarify, I mean, I don't think any money was lost. I think it was more a case of as, you know, Mr. Bose said, the money, you know, it wasn't necessarily crystal clear in the report how much unassigned money, it was there, but you had to kind of know where to find it, so I think this is a way to really help us know that number, and I think that where I agree with you on the budget part, yeah, it's, this is sort of the cap and non money, it always, it always sits there. It is tied to the budget insofar as that pilot comes in every year as part of the budget. So I think there is a tie into the budget, and I think as we showed this past year, we, you know, it's good to the only time we can act on it as a council is during the the only time we can act on it as a council is during the budget season, that that's why, that's why I think that the April one date was was sort of put out there, but um, you know, I I guess, let me then, let's just steer the conversation this way, uh, I don't see any other.
If I could follow up on that, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
So I understand how the link to the budget and when I said lost money, just to clarify, I don't mean that we lost, like the town lost money, like the funds went missing. The the lost money was the idea that we had lost track of money, but sort of in the public sector, it's almost as bad as just losing the money completely because you had money out there, you had people's tax money that was sitting somewhere that you had no idea that it was sitting there. So it's not accruing interest, it's just kind of sitting idle. So I I guess I would just like to tighten up the whole process was sort of where my comments were going.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Mr. Bo, uh, Mr. Boz, go ahead.
Um, the amount of the funds that have been accumulated over the years has been discussed publicly at budget meetings before. Okay, I know in the plethora of information you and you guys get tons of info, I know that, I understand that, I don't expect. I can't remember everything that happens in my office, I'm sure the nine council members present and past can't remember it either. But we have had discussions at budget time about what the available funds in the cap and nonrecurring budget were. So this is no clandestine, nontransparent, whatever adjective you want to add to the process here, uh, about that. Now, is it really out there for for to for everyone to see as clearly as they should have? No, it's not, I I agree a hundred percent with you on that, but, um, I'm I'm having, you know, going through my mind is that there's some conspiracy thought out there that there's, the town is sequestering money and no one knows about it. Okay, let me, let me just bring this up to a point. One year, the town council through the budget process approved half a million dollars, uh, for the Simpson, um, parking lot. Okay, that was overturned by referendum. Some of you folks, I believe, were not on the council at the time and but the budget process had been passed, the referendum overturned that, um, that action. So we, or I believe the referendum may have overturned the town's ability to to sign leases with the with the five owners. And and I do beg your pardon, I don't remember the dirty details, I'm sure maybe one of the attorneys presence, maybe, uh, maybe it does. Anyway, that half a million dollars was funded in that fiscal year in that line item in the cap and nonrecurring budget where the Simpson lot, the Simpson parking lot, Simpson Court, that's the word I'm thinking, Simpson Court Parking Lot. Well, Henry McCully was starting to get behind on some roads because we had a few bad winters in a row. He came to the mayor and to the council during, but and then the mayor during budget time to say, hey, I'd like to use that half a million. Actually, it was four hundred ninety seven thousand because I think John Thompson spent two or three thousand dollars on some type of legal avatar or something like that. And it was either four hundred ninety six, four hundred ninety seven thousand dollars, uh, in expenditures above and beyond what was received from the electric division pilot that year. And I used the same description, um, during the budget process, use of the cap and nonrecurring fund balance of four hundred nine, whatever, four hundred ninety seven thousand. Again, I do beg your pardon, I I I don't remember the dirty details. And there was discussion about that, that at that time, that would have left, you know, close to two million, two point two, whatever it was, of a of a surplus, an accumulated surplus in the cap and nonrecurring fund. Uh, and I know it's been asked here and there, maybe just in question form verbally at 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 budget sessions. Uh, so I I I know it it has been discussed, um, but so it's just, I I I just want that out there and 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 stated for the record. I just don't want anybody, I don't want nine council members and I don't want members of the public or anybody who might read the meeting or see this meeting or read the minutes thinking that all the town was piggy banking, you know, million, whatever, and 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 not telling anybody, not sharing it, almost like oh, almost like we were hoarding nuts, like we're squirrels coming up in the winter season. But, you know, just, I I just wanted, I didn't say that during the budget cycle because you you guys were it was a very difficult budget season, so I didn't want to belabor it, but it keeps coming up and up and up again and I I'd be remiss if I did not at least try to put that on the record. Not to start arguments with anybody, but it has been discussed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, no problem. Thank you, Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I gotta say, you know, I agree with Mr. Boz that that's the one time that I do recall that there was some sort of reappropriation from the cap and nonrecurring budget, but I also, you know, distinctly remember that, you know, I had the idea one day that none of these projects can possibly be done to the penny. And there's got to be some sort of difference between what is budgeted and what is actually spent. And I asked the question just out of the blue. And that's how we found out first. At least that's how I first found out that there was unspent money in this account. And I know that we've worked forward from there with getting monthly statements and that's helpful. But ultimately, what's before us is we're trying to comply with Connecticut General Statute three, six, three, which says that the treasurer shall annually make available information and data on the condition of such fund to the budget-making authority and to the public. And such information and data may be made part of the annual report of the municipality. So the question is whether or not the language before us here today, if adopted, would meet that statute. I I think that's our intent. You know, as I said, I I think it's a good start. I look forward to seeing the result of this language. Um, and I'd like to move forward. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, um, my intent was not to put Mr. Boz on the defensive. I don't think anyone at the town level did anything nefarious. I think it's more akin to, um, and it wasn't necessarily in this administration, but it's more akin to not keeping an eye on the, um, on what money was in the account. And I don't know that we could, there's any way that you could deny that because we ended up with an extra, you know, one point two million or whatever. So so again, don't get defensive, Jim, it's not, I'm not pointing the finger at you, but there, we clearly found some money that we didn't know was out there. So I'm just trying to address that situation going forward.
Okay.
Certainly, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, yeah, uh, Councilman Marone, I I was not, um, I did not, I, if I did suggest that you were putting me on the defensive, I did not mean it that way. I I did not think of that way. It's just a, you know, I just don't want other folks out there thinking that we're, we're doing something that we shouldn't be doing because you know what? What goes on in this world today is 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 sometimes a little bit crazy, so. Uh, but no, Joe, in all seriousness, I I I did not think you were accusing me of anything, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boz. I'm gonna just, uh, we have no other comments from the council. What I'm going to suggest, I'm going to amend my motion, but I I just want to, uh, I don't know, Attorney Small or anybody else wants to help me out on the wording since since we, it it doesn't, it sounds like twice a year is not an issue, it's happening. Mr. Boz is already looking at it twice a year, so I guess the way to, how the way to amend the wording would be to say on or prior to December thirty first and again, that has to be the same. Is that a good way to reword it to get twice a year?
When is the audit?
Well, by state law, the audit is due December thirty first. Um, however, you can apply to OPM for an extension if if needed. Uh, the extension has to be in, I believe, by other statute, by, I believe, December fifteenth, third of December, something like that in the statutes.
I mean, what did, what would you expect to be difference between December thirty first and April first?
Not a, not a lot, um, but, you know, like I said, we we have made a habit of um, formally sitting down with Public Works and Engineering twice a year, uh, just to get, uh, sort of
When do you meet with them? When do you do that?
We meet in the fall and then we meet again probably in March. We could change that if we could.
But what about November then?
That's that, to have something to the council, that's, that's fine. By the, let's say by the November thirtieth and April first or whatever the council, whoever the you know, whatever's going to make you folks uh, comfortable and and what you think that information is gonna, gonna mean to you, if it's going to help you in any of your decision makings. Uh, I don't have a problem with November thirty and April first.
Okay, I'm, then I, I amend my motion uh, to reflect those dates by November thirtieth and by April first, I think Counselor Tada, you would, I think you seconded the motion? No, did you second it?
Yes.
You, uh, accept my friendly? Okay, so we, so Cheryl Ann, both, uh, I've amended my motion and Counselor Tada has amended her second. So the motion we have before us uh, is now on or prior, uh, to November thirtieth and April first of each year, and then the rest of it reads exactly the same. That is the motion. Is there any further discussion from the council? Any discussion from anybody from the public who is logged into the meeting online? I only see one caller, caller, and I had to mute your line because there was some background noise. So caller two, I don't even know who you are, but if you want to comment, I'm unmuting you if you'd like to comment on this. And if you don't, that's fine. All right, I'll bring it back to the council. There are no further comments. Uh, then Cheryl Ann, could you please call the roll?
Yes, okay, um, start with Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
Counselor Fishbine. Counselor Fishbine, you're muted.
Since I get to vote second for once, I'll vote yes.
Counselor Laffin.
Yes.
Chairman Shortell.
Yes.
Counselor Tada.
Yes.
And Counselors Andrew.
Yes.
And I missed Counselor Marone, sorry.
That's all right, I'll vote yes.
Okay, the motion passes, this will be, uh, passed on to the council for the full council to have a public hearing and vote on it. So we will, we will do that. On to item. Sorry, gotta get back here. Item five, discussion and possible action on amending chapter sixty two, seasonal outdoor dining regulations. Uh, section sixty two dash fourteen, so, uh, I am going to give again, quick context, quick context for this item, this is a this is part of a larger discussion, uh, that that we're going to be having with the with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this tonight is specific to this one ordinance on sidewalk dining in the center of town, which we'll discuss. But I've been working, uh, with Chairman Servoni and with Chairman Jim Seiter of the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of look at all of our zoning regs and ordinances to to sort of start a process of brainstorming, a public process of brainstorming on ways that we can, uh, look at what we've learned from COVID. Uh, with COVID, there have been a lot of restrictions that have been, we've eased up on and looking at permanently easing up on some of these, if we learned anything. Uh, can we maybe change some of these longstanding regulations or codes? So the the ultimate outcome for of this, uh, the next step in this, of the bigger discussion will be a joint planning and zoning and ordinance committee meeting, I don't have a date yet, likely October, I've worked that out with with Chairman Seiter of planning and zoning. I'm also working with Tim Ryan on this, so some more to come on the larger discussion, but, uh, you know, there's, I hate this expression, but you know, the low hanging fruit. This one is low hanging fruit for us, which is the sidewalk dining ordinance. So specific to this item tonight, I am proposing, uh, that we allow the, uh, outdoor dining extended at least by a month, November thirtieth. Uh, currently, this ordinance out only governs the center of town, uh, so just, I just want to be clear on that. We're just talking about, uh, specific streets in the center of town, the restaurants right by North Main and and Center. But currently, the outdoor sidewalk dining ordinance runs from April one to October thirty first every year. So my thought on this was, uh, we should permanently extend that to November thirtieth at least. The reason being November is is, I think, oftentimes a very, uh, comparable month weather wise to April, frankly, early April, uh, can be pretty nasty, whereas November, you get some beautiful days. Why not let these restaurants take advantage of any of you, of any good weather? Um, so that was my thinking, I, there's, there's some more in the backup on this, uh, but that's really where it comes from. Uh, I'm, you know, I I did have one talk with one counselor offline who said, let's just make it, you know, permanent. Let them do it all year if they want, and I'm frankly fine with that. So before any motions are made, I would like to discuss this concept and then we can maybe make a motion. Um, but that's, that's the introduction to this item on the agenda, so I'm going to go to, uh, open it up, Counselor Fishbine, you are first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm all in favor of the outdoor dining, um. You know, I have had some people complain about, you know, the situation in Simpson Court. The parking spaces are taken up, you know, and I've explained to them the balance and, you know, the restaurants are part of our downtown area. Um, we also had concerns about the tables, um, coming down well, Center Street and North Main Street, I guess. Um, you know, I don't know the the rights of the the particular restaurants to utilize, you know, I think there are sidewalks, if I recall correctly, because I was part of when we originally did this outdoor dining thing, so are there liability issues? I mean, um, are we going to require insurance if it's an area that they don't have of express permission to, uh, vend, uh, to to deliver, to serve food? Um, you know, I think those are things that we have to work with, but assuming that we have those parameters to protect the taxpayers from a suit, if somebody, you know, falls on our property, uh, I would have no problem with letting the shopkeepers, letting the restaurateurs, um, you know, use the sidewalks. Um, and I would perhaps expand it to include the shopkeepers, you know, Celebrate Wallingford, we allow the the dressing bar, right? To put product out on the sidewalk, you know, perhaps that's something that we can look at also. You know, because they're restricted by COVID also. Um, in a certain, certain level, so, um, let's, let's open up our town to more economic development and opportunities. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Counselor Fishbine, let me just clarify, I I feel like, uh, we're proposing, what I'm proposing here is is simply expanding the existing ordinance, the timing of the, when the ordinance allows sidewalk dining in these specific restaurants. So you're talking about getting insurance, whatever they have today, they already have it for April one to October thirty first. So I don't know why they would need additional insurance to go, I'm just talking about that, we're talking about this one ordinance and I agree with your sentiment to expand it. And that's why I preface this by saying this is part of a larger discussion. So I would take all of that feedback you just provided and and we will address that next month, but I don't know why there would be additional insurance or like, there's our, I mean, isn't there already liability from April one to October thirty one?
So presently, and I don't want to point to any particular restaurants, right? When we set this up and you look at the statute, the ordinance that we created, we put in place, there had to be a fence or barrier. And and I know that at least one particular place doesn't have the fence or barrier, okay? And I know that the tables have encroached upon area that's not in front of at at least two restaurants in our upper downtown area. So I don't think when they contacted their insurance company and said, write a policy that the, you know, that they're covered potentially for that area. I don't know, that's another question, because I would think that, you know, like the area where J. Christians is, um, you know, Half Moon wouldn't have a legal right to put a table in front of that place. Um, but J. Christians may, so, you know, does Half Moon, not Half Moon, um, Archie Moore's, I mean. Um, you know, I don't know if, you know, we should require insurance if they go down that far. Those are, that's the thing that I'm talking about. Also, are we? I know you said we're just talking about the uptown area, but like knuckleheads in that area also has the ability under the statute to do the outdoor dining. Are we anticipating?
No, I think, I think, I don't. Right, no, I don't think you're, okay, let me, let me take a step back, okay? Pre, before COVID, before any of this happened, restaurants in a specific area governed by our town code in the center of town. Now, there's, there's, I know there's also planning and zoning, which governs the rest of the town, and restaurants have to apply for a permit, but I'm talking about what's governed by the ordinance. They could have sidewalk dining. I'm talking about, and they could have it from April 1 to October 31st. And so what I'm saying is, this ordinance, forget the statute, I'm not talking about a statute. I'm not talking about COVID. I'm not talking about the Simpson Court and the Simpson Court. Absent all of that, I'm talking about a simply extending, permanently extending the season to November 30th in the future. That's all I'm talking about. So when you talk about these, these imperfect, the existing ordinance, I guess my question to you is, if I hadn't put this on the agenda, were you going to come back and raise all these questions about the existing ordinance? Because you're, I, I, you're worried about insurance and all these other things, but I haven't. It's the first I've heard that we've had all these concerns about the ordinance as it stands now. So I guess I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page.
Well, first of all, the, I believe the ordinance as it presently exists, 62 dash 10, deals with a lot more area than the uptown area for outdoor dining. So that's what I'm talking about, is the ordinance. I'm also talking about the, so, so the, the question is, are we just taking a particular portion? Because like I'm looking at 62 dash 10 E, which talks about the northerly sidewalk of Quinipiac Street from South Colony Road, Westerly to Washington Street. And southerly, the southerly sidewalk of Quinipiac Street from South Colony Road, Westerly to Washington Street. That's right in the ordinance that we're talking about this body is, is addressing. Okay, so just to get that clear. The expansion and, and concerns that have been raised would not be for this body to even consider, quite frankly, because that would be an enforcement. We don't enforce, we draft the ordinances. So I have directed those individuals that have contacted me to the appropriate enforcement, but I'm just talking about, I, I know you're talking about expanding the time. And I'm just bringing up.
Right, that's exactly it. I'm talking about extending the time, and you're raising like all these other issues that have nothing to do with expanding the time. So I guess that's my, that's what I'm trying, I'm just trying to sort through.
Where we're, where we're expanding the time was one of the questions. Is it for the entire ordinance or just a portion?
Okay, my intention is the entire ordinance. That, that's what I would want to do.
Okay.
So I'm sorry if I misspoke or I misrepresented that. I would want to extend the timing for, for everyone.
Okay, that's, that's all I had at this time. You just said the uptown area, okay.
Yep, so I'm sorry I misspoke on that. Chairman Servoni.
Was Counselor Marone ahead of me?
He has said he's off step. He was.
Yep. I guess I just want to clarify, a lot of the downtown dining that's going on right now that's been expanded is reflective of, and I'm not going to cite to the exact one, but one of the governor's executive orders, which was intended to encourage the reopening of restaurants to allow for expanded outdoor dining. And, and Attorney Small can correct me if I am misspeaking at all, but basically expanded the location they can take up and, and encouraged the administrative officials of a municipality to kind of do whatever it took to expand the ability of restaurants to dine outside. That's why you have tents and parking lots that we've never seen before and wouldn't otherwise fit in our zoning regulations and all those sorts of things. And so that's happening without any ordinance action. And Chairman Shortell, I know that you're aware of this, but I just want to make that clear for everyone. You know, the fact that Archie Morris has tables in front of the now closed J. Christians has nothing to do with, with the ordinance. And it's, it's not allowed by the ordinance. It's something that the administration has been encouraged to do by executive order. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, and, and again, it's just sort of, I'm looking at the ordinance, and again, I'm thinking after, maybe I wasn't clear on this. I'm thinking after COVID, when we go back to normal, which we will. And there aren't, there aren't tents in Simpson Court, and, and you know, things are back the way they were. I'm saying, well, let's still allow outdoor dining longer than we do today as it's governed by this ordinance. That's what I'm saying, that's what I am, I am looking to get consensus on. So maybe I wasn't clear on that. Vice Chair Laffin.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, I mean, I thought you were clear. I think, yeah, this is all, what do we do after COVID, you know, back in the, in the regular world? I would, I would say then, why don't we extend it through March too? I mean, I mean, I know a couple of years, we had some great second half of the March, and those business owners, multiple of them, restaurant owners were coming up to me saying like, oh, you know, if I could open a week earlier, you know, that would be great, and, you know, I can totally capitalize in it whenever. And there was no other reason, I don't know where the April 1st came from, I know there's a longer history there, but, you know, if we're going to extend it November, then like March, like if it's not good weather, they're not going to open. And if they're following all the rules that we have existing, I don't, I don't see a problem with that either. I actually don't even mind all the tents and all this other stuff. I know there's a balance you got to create with parking in Simpson Court and, and other places, and that's, that's a planning and zoning thing, I think. And I think all this is good, because it's causing them to, to look at their stuff and, and consider all those things. But I'm totally in favor of this. I don't know if I was the one you were referencing that, yeah, I do it all year. You know, if they've got heaters and the right conditions, it doesn't bother me. Especially with all this stuff going on, I think it's proven in a lot of levels where we've, we've been forced to stretch outside of our normal boundaries. And it's actually not that bad. So, yeah, I'm in support of this. If others were to, I'd also support including the month of March in it. Thanks.
Thank you, and yeah, I think you nailed it. That's exactly the mindset I think we need. Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor Laffin 100%. I think he's right on the money. And I think the thing he said about even going year round, you know, I think what COVID has taught us is that there really isn't any harm to having, to allowing businesses to put people out on the sidewalk. You know, you can make restrictions as far as you can't do it during snowstorms and things like that. But I mean, but if you want to do cocoa and hot toddies out, you know, out on the veranda, what, what harm would there be? So to me, this is one of those ordinances that the very existence of the ordinance, you know, is sort of overly restrictive. Let the businesses make money, you know, and do what they do. And I think it's, it's actually attractive for the center of town. When you drive through town and you see people sitting outside dining, I think it draws people to town. It's a, you know, it's sort of sells Wallingford. So I agree 100%. We either, I'd be happy with what we have now, I'd be happy with adding March, I'd be happy with going year round. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Marone. And in fact, Tom, it was Joe, it was Joe I was referencing, a conversation I had with him. But I'm glad that, that both of you, I know, I know. You know, I, I'm gonna, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion and then see if anything wants to second. So I'm going to motion that we amend the ordinance, chapter 62 dash 14 G to allow us to change it as follows. It's currently read seasonal outdoor dining shall be permitted from April 1 through October 31st. I would motion that we change that to read seasonal outdoor dining shall be permitted from March 1st through November 30th. So I'll, let's add a month on each end and see how it goes. Counselor Laffin got in first, he seconded it. Cheryl Ann, just you. So that's the motion we have on the table. So we're going to add a month at each end, start there, baby steps, and see how that goes. Any discussion, further discussion from the council? Actually, I'm going to, let me stop there. We do have Chief Heidegaard here on the, on the line. Chief, thank you for joining us, especially right before holiday weekend. I know my, my timing for this meeting isn't great. Do you, do you have concerns from a safety perspective going an extra month in either direction?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, we don't. We would work with the other departments. Like you said, planning and zoning predominantly, building department plays a big role in this. And for us, there is a slight concern with tents and enclosures. When you put side curtains on the tents, egress becomes an issue and they actually become considered as a building. But our Marshals Office would work with other departments. I, I agree with all the comments earlier that this is good for business, it's good for the public, and certainly good for the town of Wallingford. So we would do whatever we can to work with the departments and encourage this and do it safely.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that feedback and definitely appreciate, appreciate what you said. Okay, are there any other comments from counselors besides Craig? I don't see any comments from counselors. Any comments from people on the, on the go to meeting? Comments from anyone on the phone? Bring it back to the council. Cheryl Ann, could you please call the roll on this motion?
Yes, sir. Ready?
Okay.
Start with Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
He's offended.
Counselor Fishbein?
Yes.
Counselor Laffin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marone.
Yes.
Chairman Shortell.
Yes.
Counselor Tada.
Yes.
Counselors Andrew.
Yes.
The motion passes. This will also go to a public hearing at some point later in September. So thank you, everybody, for the discussion. And like I said, there's more to come on this. You'll be hearing more from me and Jim Seiter on a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning, again, probably in October, where we can brainstorm publicly and look to find other opportunities to do what we just did tonight. Because a lot of it is zoning, as someone said, so, but just keep, keep thinking, you know, can do attitude. I think that's what we need to do here. So thank you, everyone, for that. We will move now on to item six, discussion and possible action on amending chapter 139 littering, section 139 dash 1 to 139 dash 11. This was brought to the committee by Counselors Andrew. So I will turn it over to you, Counselors Andrew.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so basically the, the basically the reason that I brought this forward was, you know, I, I walk a lot down the center of town, and I'm sure, you know, as a lot of you travel around, you see a lot of the same things that I see with a lot of the trash receptacles. Trash receptacles is really where this started for me, because I see a lot of household garbage in, in the receptacle. And, and even with, even with the new replacements down in the center of town, you know, the cabinet enclosures, first off, those cabinet enclosures, they're not completely secured. They're real easy to open the side door. And, and, you know, it's, it's only going so far to prevent people from, from dumping. And the idea here is that we're not talking about a small, you know, plastic shopping bag. It's got a few things from your car in it. Those are, to me, those are almost acceptable. I mean, when I, when, on occasion, when I used to fill up with fuel or something, if I had one of those bags in my car from cups and wrappers and things in my car, I might lean over while I'm filling up with fuel and dump them in the garbage pail at the gas station if I didn't do it at home. The problem that I'm seeing is more and more large, tall kitchen bags are being placed inside the receptacles. I've talked with Public Works. They've indicated to me that it gets exaggerated sometimes. The fact where we even get people calling Public Works because the receptacles at some of the parks are filled with, with weekend event garbage, and then on top of it, household garbage. And they even cited a couple of examples where, right after their trucks leave, a couple of local people will go right over and put their garbage bags into those pails. That's, that's the neat and clean side of this, that they're actually, you know, getting them in or at least near a pail where they can be picked up. When we go beyond this, we're talking about people just dumping things everywhere. And I know we already have a full blown littering ordinance. The issue with this one here is that I feel like it's starting to get to the point where the downtown looks unsightly when we see this. There are bags that are, that are sticking out of these receptacles. They're clearly household trash. They mound over the top. If they can't get inside the receptacle, they'll drop it right at the foot of the receptacle and it makes it look bad. So I, I figure we start with this, we amp up the, the, the punishment level, even after maybe a written warning, you know, and then from that, from there, we kind of move forward. I think that we need to get some teeth into this ordinance, then we need some more enforcement on it. And that's really where, where this came into play.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselors Andrew, for giving us context for this. We did get, just, just for the record, in our backup, Attorney Small did, in advance of the meeting, provide us with some references to the Connecticut general statutes defining that a person who dumps more than one cubic foot in volume of solid waste at one time in a collection container without the owner's permission is guilty of an infraction. The owner of the collection of container may post a sign on or near the container indicating the penalties for the unauthorized dumping. Police can issue the summons and then pursue it to a different statute in the same chapter. An ordinance, an ordinance may provide for a fine of up to $1,000 for a violation of the first one I cited. It can be enforced by the police department or a person authorized by the chief elected official. The citation procedure in a different statute would apply. So just that's some information from Attorney Small. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank Counselors Andrew for bringing this to our attention. I was over at North Farmers Reservoir a few weeks ago, and I just saw like six bags of garbage sitting there right along the roadway. And I mean, I just, you know, you sort of think about that commercial when we were, some of us were kids with the Indian at the lakeside and the tear coming down his face. I mean, how anybody in these days could just dump their trash along the roadside or, you know, we've had instances where the, one of the parks just pulling over and putting the trash there. So I think something has to be done here. And I, I'm all in favor of escalating penalties here. You know, looking at the language that Attorney Small gave us, provide for a fine of up to $1,000 for a violation, I would expect that we would have an incremental that, well, I don't know what the body itself is considering, whether or not to give discretion or to set that, you know, that incremental. That's, that's what I would be in favor of here. Perhaps, you know, you do 250 increments, because I would expect that, you know, we're going to be in approval, we'll send it to Janice for some drafting. You know, something like that I would suggest, but I think this would, would in stopping some of this really bad stuff. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Fishbein. Attorney Small, just to clarify, the current ordinance has a, I think it's $90 a day fine?
Yeah, I don't know that it's specific, there's the language specifically puts us into this category. I think we would have to do some revisions to the ordinance itself, so. So I think that we would talk specifically. So I think that we would talk specifically about these receptacles. I think you might want to do both the ordinance changes and perhaps put the signage on. The, um, or think about putting the signage on the receptacles themselves, saying this is an infraction. You could actually. Be issued a summons for that. Um, and then we could have in the ordinance, the, an incremental fine. Or more than one violation. Um, I think you could do both if you wanted to.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, Counselors Andrew, you wanted to add something? I think you're on, you're on.
Thanks. I got a, I got a hardware piece here that said it was on, but there's a software control. I forgot to take off. Thank you for that. Um. There's a, you know, my thought process on this was I had, uh, I had originally had even, uh. A tiered setup for this. I had indicated, you know, maybe, you know, first time offense could even be, you know, even be written off like with a warning letter and basically. Handing the person some sort of a write-up that indicates what the, what the, you know, the infraction was and then a second offense and third offense that builds up. My. My intention here was multifaceted for suggesting, first off, by, by keeping people from littering in general, you're, you're, you're going to get a cleaner town. That's the first piece of it. The, the second piece for me was not to immediately start, um, penalizing people from, from a monetary standpoint right away. I, I wanted a little bit more of. Littering is fine. People don't, some people don't understand that putting a bunch of household. Trash into a town receptacle is technically not the intended use for it. They would view it like there's nothing wrong with me doing it. I don't get what I'm being even chastised for. So. The first thing I wanted to do was to kind of graduate people's thinking on this. That was partly why. When I wrote it up, the first one was really just a notification. Here's the ordinance, you know, in case you, case you weren't clear on it. The other, the other piece of it, which I, I didn't really make clear was, and, and I'm glad that. Um, Attorney Small kind of outlined it, and owner of the collection container. And the reason that I'm glad that she put it in that way is because I'm not only talking about the town. Commercial businesses and condominium complexes are also falling under pressure to this. And what I mean by this is. People see a dumpster and they just use it. I mean, it's, it's, there's a difference if you're walking up the street and you've got a, I don't know, a soda can in your hand and you see. Somebody's, um, residential container and you just toss it in there. That's, I'm not suggesting that's okay, but that's very small. Based on, you know, its size and not littering, as opposed to somebody that drives up to a dumpster and dumps garbage. Again, in my walking around. I watched somebody pull into the train station parking lot on the Route Five side. Pull their car in up to where the barber shop used to be. They parked it in that lot. They went to their trunk. Took out a bag of trash, walked it over to the dumpster where the barber shop used to be, lift the lid, drop it, get in their car and leave as if it was nothing. So again, the other piece of this is to get people that do that and go, listen, do you understand that that's illegal? And if they really want to feign the understanding, then they get that notification. Then after that, you've got a record that they were notified. And then you, you're, you're free to kind of add on to it. I'm, I'm really trying to also protect these, these businesses and individuals as well because. If too much trash gets into these receptacles, their costs go up because they have to tip their own dumpsters more. This is just going to continue to go on as we've got people with financial pressures on them and they're, they're looking to cut corners and it's, and it's. It's an unfortunate situation that we're in, but we, we've got to kind of set the balance because right now. People that do this dumping, illegal dumping or throwing into other receptacles, there's no punishment mechanism. They do it with abandon and indifference because. Nothing's going to happen to them. So we got to start drawing the line on it. And that's really where the, the additional sentiment from mine came for this. So thank you again.
Thank you, Counselors Andrew. Vice Chair Laughlin.
Thank you. No, I, I think this is great. Um, if there's a sign on it, uh, Attorney Small, do we need to give them a warning or can we just jump to a fine? I mean. The Counselors Andrew's, you know, point is that, you know, we want to grab them, say, do you understand? Everybody understands. If you don't own that dumpster or the very public, you know, trash bin that's outside of. The lamp shop in the middle of town and you're just walking down and trumping, dropping your garbage in it, like you know that's not yours. And that's not what it's for. If we have a sign, can we just slap them with the fine? I mean, it's, how hard is it going to be able to prove? Who these people are anyway? We kind of have to catch them in the act unless we're, we're going to actually go through their trash bags, right? And, and find some sort of identifying information. Um.
Well, the, the.
So why not want to get them the first time, grab them?
The sign and, the sign is going to be necessary for the summons part. So, you know, in the example of someone who has a dumpster. They would want to have a sign on their dumpster saying, you know, it's an infraction if you dump your trash in my receptor. And the same thing for us. The, um, the citation process really actually does require the written warning. So that's on the ordinance side. So if you cover it both, I mean, one, I think the sign possibly could be a deterrent to some people if they see that sign, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm kind of thinking that you might want to do both, but. I mean, somebody, I agree with you. You should know that you can't dump your garbage in somebody's private. Trash bin, but, um, I think the, the posting of the sign for, for the police to issue a summons would be required to have the sign on there. Sort of like, you know, you get people for trespassing by virtue of having a sign on there.
Right. So I, yeah, I'm definitely fair with the signs anyway, even if, I know that's kind of cumbersome on each of our, on each of our waste receptacles going up and down Center Street and east and. Uh, not east, but north and south main, whatever it is, um, little signs I guess. Uh, and if we got to have a warning, we got to have a warning. But, um, and when, whenever we get to actually putting language forward. I, I would say skip to two fifty. I would jump into five or seven fifty to start. Like they got a warning. I mean, this isn't. This is, this, this is blatant. There's, there's nobody that knows that that's, you know, everybody knows that that's not good and that, that, that's not okay. I'm sorry, I have like no tolerance for it. And thank you to Counselors Andrew for, for bringing this up like this.
Uh, Chairman Cervone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, this is important stuff. Uh, keeping. Our town clean and free of rubbish is very important. My question is for Attorney Small. I, I thought that there was a limit on. The amount of, of fine that we could levy by ordinance. It, am I misremembering that?
Uh, you're not generally, but the, this particular statute says it could, you could be fined up to, you could do up to a hundred, a thousand dollars. So this is a very specific authorization to do that.
Well, then find a way we should. Thank you.
Uh, Counselors Andrew.
Yeah. Uh, hi again. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanted to add one more thing because I, I wanted to. Um, emphasize for the enforcement piece because, um, something that Counselor Laughlin just said kind of jarred my memory. We, we already have, um, situations and incidents where whoever the body might be, it might be Public Works, it might be the owner of the, 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 um, dumpster. Has, you know, gone through the rubbish and we get identifying mail, letters, things that basically identify whose trash it is. I want to make sure that, you know, we all understand and then the public listening at home understands. That only proves whose garbage it is. It doesn't mean that that was the person dumping it. So this is going to be, it's going to be a little bit of a level of. Complication when we're trying to do the enforcement piece. The ultimate thing that we're trying to do here is to. Stop the littering, stop the illegal dumping in whatever form or fashion that it is. I know some people are supportive of the fines. They, they feel like a fine is a deterrent. And then if it's not a deterrent because people don't care, it's a good punishment. But I want people to understand that if I, if, if I was at a meeting and Counselor Laughlin said, hey, while you're going downtown, can you grab a bag for me and, and toss it out? And I threw it, his trash in the dumpster, somebody's dumpster, and they combed through it, they're not going to nail Tom. Because I'm the one who did it. They have to be able to prove who put the trash in the receptacle. So I want to make sure people are understanding of that, number one. And number two, that goes back to a little bit of, of people are going, may have to do a little bit of their own enforcement. If they've got. And I've said this before, if you've got a camera outside the house or you have the ability to snap a photo to catch somebody in the act. This may be part of what you'll need to do to help with the enforcement side. I know people don't like to get involved. And I know people don't like to extend themselves or stick their neck out, but we, we are not going to be able to do it solely on. Hey, this, this has got identifying marks in the trash. We know it was John Jones. It's got to go more than that. It's got to be John Jones putting it in there. So again, I want to be supportive, but I want to be as transparent about this as possible. That, that, you know, with the people getting a good understanding is that enforcement is a piece of this mechanism. And, uh, what we're ultimately trying to do is, is, you know, obviously keep the town cleaner and cut back on our costs. When Public Works has to go and do this work for us, cleaning up extra times on the weekends. And there's bureaus and cabinets piled up next to some of these containers or worse, just in randomized spots and they have to go pick it up. They have to do the work. The guys get paid more or they're taken away from other jobs. And when we go to the, um, to the center to dump them off, we are charged. We are charged like any other person using the, the reclaim center. So. I want to make sure people understand that as well. I, I wanted that added clarity onto this. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Janice, do you have what you need maybe to start to draft something or to amend this or maybe come up with a kind of a straw man, you know, so we can react to something? Or do you, do you want more? Consensus?
No, I think I.
We're looking for.
I think I have enough to start. I'll be aggressive on the fines and then, but you can change them if you want.
Okay. Okay. So I think then that'll be the next step that, that we can, uh, we'll review the language, uh. The draft language that, that you come up with. Are there any other, uh, questions from? The council?
Well, I, I just want to say I'm not, Tom, I'm not picking up your trash, just so you know.
Well, I mean, you know, after this meeting adjourns.
I'm good with that.
I'm going to fill up Craig Fishbein's name.
I gotta tell you, I'm spending a lot of time on trash. This is really kind of great.
Right. Um. Okay. Uh, no comments from the council. Are there any comments from the public? On the phone or otherwise on this item? Seeing none? Uh, our next ordinance meeting is, is October sixth. Our next council meeting is Tuesday. We can do it all over again. So I adjourn this meeting. Have a great holiday weekend, everyone. Thank you.